Call our meeting to order. First is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm sorry we don't have any requests or public comments. The next on the list. The votes to continue or quit.
I really do not have a lot. It's just that over the next couple of months, I hope to learn more about the various laws that have been enacted and how they're going to affect schools in the future. So that will be a focus over the next few months. But we had a great end to the school year and we're already planning for the next one.
Assistant superintendent's reports.
Unless you have questions, it's all there. Well, I will say, we're still scheduled to ship the 23rd of July. They say it's a two to three day ship for the chillers. So we should, we're still on, we're still on schedule to start school with new chillers. The pads were poured today, so what we have to do is set them and hook them up.
Roof repairs are getting ready to take place to the south.
South, yes.
That's all that stuff we're seeing is.
Everything is staged, ready to go.
Yep.
And there's a little bit, there was chances of rain this week a little bit, so, but there, we got the schedule.
Great.
Background checks are done, they're ready to fire away on Monday morning.
Good.
All right, future dates. August 22nd is our next board meeting, September 19th, board meeting 24th, November 21st, December 19th, and January 16th, 2025, February 20th, 2025, March 13th, April 10th, May 8th, and June 19th are all the next school meetings for next year.
May I ask that on, that we move the August, to start out the year, that we move the August 22nd board meeting? Ozark Meet the Tigers Night, I think it was the first time we did that last year, and we, it was in conflict last year. And so we would like to move it because of that. And also, we are planning the ribbon cutting for the storm shelter as well as the activity center.
Do you have a suggestion for date?
Well, I was looking, and as school starts, it's getting harder and harder. So I had initially thought of August the 8th, and that's, because that's a dead week, and I don't know if anybody's on vacation during that time break?
I'm not.
Okay?
What's on the 15th?
On the 15th, that's when we have back to school night.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So we could go, what's the Thursday after that?
29.
The 29th. That still gives us a couple, well, a day to get in our tax rate, but as long as there's no major problem, that shouldn't be an issue, and we're always prepared for that anyway. So we could do the 29th. That's keeping in the vein of the Thursday night.
I agree with that.
Are you good with that?
Any motion to move the board meeting in August 29th? I'll second it. All in favor? We need has been moved to August 29th.
Thank you. We're really wanting to make August 22nd a great big kickoff for the school year.
Any other future dates you can develop?
We have to, next week, the MSBA conference in Grayson, and I know that I'm going to go down Monday, and I think Amber's going down also, and then Barbara's going to go down for secretary training on that Tuesday. And so we will also be developing and writing the calendar out, events that are coming out, and we'll get those to you.
Next is the consent agenda. Would you entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor? No opposed? Okay, moving on. Item 16, approve of the board education open session minutes from last month. Would you motion to approve that? All session. All in favor? The item's approval. New business. Presentation of the 2024-2025 budget.
Okay, there you go. It's so quiet here tonight. Oh my gosh, it's really sort of odd. Okay, so I wanted to just quickly go over the highlights of the budget, budget process. And so when I started here, one of the things that we really wanted to do is to have our department heads as well as our principals have more input into the budget. So for the past two years, we have netted down to find out what are your needs from supplies as well as from personnel. And I tell them, even if things are not approved in a year, keep asking. If you truly believe that you need things to be, keep asking, because one of these days they may be approved. And our principals and our executive directors have done really well in trying to keep the budget to a minimum, but also knowing that there are things that are coming out of the pack that we're going to have to add in the future. So I wanted to, on the paper graph, really, really quickly, I wanted to go over what our estimated revenue is. I remember we budgeted, tried to budget conservative, conservative on revenues and also have probably not conservative on expenses, so that hopefully at the end of the year, we've got more revenues on the budget and less expenses, more budgeting, and that it comes out to be good. So with our revenue, you can see there we have local, county, state, that are another. So about 49% of our revenue comes from local sources, and the local sources, another one is from the assessed property tax. Now, I have in here that we, I budgeted for a 3% increase in this and a $20 million in assessed valuation of new construction. That is low. That is, all of these numbers are based on a May projection. After talking to the assessor, you know, I asked him, I said that some of this, especially our personal property, was a little low, and he said that they had completed it. So these numbers will change. These are just a very conservative estimate right now. But also, if you notice, like I said, it is right at 49% of our total budget comes from local revenue. Another source of local revenue is sales tax revenue from Proposition C. Although this is considered a local source of revenue, we actually give this money to our state, and it's distributed, excuse me, distributed based on weighted average daily attendance. So this year, we're hoping out of that 40 million to get about 8.2 million dollars from Proposition C. We also have, we also have funding at the local level for meals and all of cards, and we hope to have about 950,000 on that. That is a hard number to gauge at this point, because it's also based on how many or how much the students and the adults spend on meals. Last year, it was 962,000. This year, I'm hoping to add, I think, almost 800,000, and I'm hoping that's more revenue. So it's just a difficult number to budget.
I just didn't, I just didn't hear. Did you say the Prop C numbers are reflected already in one of those, or they're addition to?
They're in.
They're in with the local?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry.
Yes, I am. Sorry, sorry. So then county revenue, we really do not give a lot of county revenue. It is about 1% of the revenue received, and it is fines, state assessed utilities, national and mineral and forest tax, and it's about $632,000 as well, we're estimating. State revenue, state revenue, we're estimating about $35 million. So this is about 44% of our budget. This year, the state changed the, a little bit of, they just changed the formula, but they changed some of the percentages that we're going to have, that which they allocate the IDEA on. And so that did help us a little bit. In the past, you get a weighted, a weighted average for special education, as well as free reduced, as well as the education proficiencies. And in the past, we just really haven't never received any money from the state for free reduced. And because of the change in their percentages, they've only reached over from 3.95 to 16.95, we're actually going to receive money for free reduced. And so that, that's going to help our budget a little bit, so that, that was a great thing for the state to do that. They also, you usually receive, like in the past, it's been $6,375 per, your average daily attendance per child, and they have, I think this year, it was $6,670. So that has also helped us in this budget. And those are coming at a great time, especially when inflation is hitting us so hard. So that is, that is really appreciated. Another funding for state revenue is early childhood special education, and we have budgeted about $2.2 million for that also. There are other smaller sources, such as parents' teachers, vocational programs, transportation, and state highly funded. And then federal revenue, you notice that we really do not receive a lot of money in federal revenue, it's about 6%. We do have one more year to be able to download our ESF funds. And if you remember what ESF funds are, those are the pandemic funds that we receive every school and throughout the nation receive, and the pandemic hit us. So we still have about $850,000 that we are going to download this year that will help our revenue. Besides ESF funds, there are four major sources for the federal funds, individuals, or excuse me, IDEA, food service, title funding, and once again, early childhood special education. And then other revenue, you see, I only have 40,000 in other revenue, and those are just from the IDAS items. So that is the budget for state, and so for revenues. And then if you go to, go to the next page, I won't go through these numbers, but if you choose to, to read through those, you can see how it's broken up between the general funds, special fund, debt, and capital projects fund. And even that will change, as when we set our tax rate, those numbers will change because we will set the tax rate for each of those funds. And then the next page. Current expenses by fund. Right now, the current expenses are working at 91 million. And it is a little odd for you to think, oh, our revenue is not 91 million, but what happens is that we already have money in our debt service, and we have money in our capital projects. Some of that capital projects are still on, still on money. And so when you spin that, you're expensing it. But we recorded that revenue three years ago. So we have to remember that schools are cash basis. And so you record revenue in a year that you get it, and you record the expenses in a year that they happen, versus accrual, where you try to match revenues and expenses in the same year. So it does make it difficult and different when you think, okay, our revenue is lower than our expenses, it's because we've already recognized revenue with some other year. So we have, let's see here, the total budget is a little over 91 million dollars. So 84% of our operating fund is our general and our special fund. So special fund is in the name of the teacher fund, where all our teacher salaries go. Everything else goes into the general fund, all our classifieds, so salaries, all our supplies. So if you add those two numbers together, it's basically called our operating fund. 84% of our, those two numbers, 84% of our operating fund is salary and benefits. There's not probably a lot of other industry that where your salary and benefits is that high than their total expenses. So it, it sometimes does become difficult, as you know, a school cannot generate any revenue. We cannot go out and sell new widgets. And so we are at the mercy of state as well as other sources of revenue. So we are very, very grateful for any source of revenue that we have. The budget this year is 4%, and 4% of this was an increase in, hell, not, sorry, not 4%, the increase to our health insurance was 4%, and the past is at 8%. So that is a good number, that it only increased by 4%. Supplies, professional development, services make up the remaining 16% of the operating fund's budget. And then you have capital projects, who still have bond money left in there that we are finishing out projects with. The total project, the total capital projects is 9.8 million. Once the building projects are completed, the district anticipates having a net balance of approximately $6.2 million. We hope that we will in October and this year, develop a long-term outlook or long-term plan to use to our capital, capital projects and capital bank. And the debt service, debt service budget is used for payments and bonds and interest related to the debt. The debt service principal owed is 85 million. The district has budgeted $3 million, rounding that, $3 million for principal payments and 3.80 for interest payments and fees. And that is what makes up the 6.973 in debt service. So if you go to the next, you will see, once again, historical expenses by fund, and notice that it says 23, 24, it's estimated, as well as 24, 25, because we have not finished out this year. And what I have noticed, as I have worked on some of these numbers, is that in school accounting or school with DESI, we can finish up our year and have it audited, but then, let's say the next year, we realize that we have to reclassify something. You can reclassify it back in that year and re-upload numbers. So sometimes, when you're trying to match this number, like a 21, 22 number, with, by going full 21, 22 report, the same report may not match, because we, sometimes, we are able to upload numbers and make it more accurate. And then the rest of this, of this thing here, is basically, if you scroll through, we are supposed to, DESI wants to have revenues by fund, which we have that, as well as function and object. Our account codes are about 16 numbers along, and so you have object, function, subject, project, location, there's all kinds of numbers here. And so there are some that DESI wants to see in, in your budget, and this just gives you a little bit more detail, if you wanted to see some more actual numbers, instead of the great big numbers. And then if you scroll down. See, all kinds, and you can get so detailed, and it's, it's basically the same numbers just presented in a different place. So we have our assessed valuation over the years, and you can see that this year, we're only estimating 3.6%. And you can tell which are your reassessment years by the percentages and which are not reassessment years. And then this one's hard to read, because this gives you the amortization for our bonds, and the next is the amortization for our leases. And then this one is the one that we will get to see where our fund balance is. Remember, we have not closed out this year. So our fund balance for next year depends on what happens this year. So I am hoping by October, after we finish this year and we're audited, I can bring you the updated numbers of this. But right now, very assertively, we are estimating an 18% fund balance for next year. And so I am asking for your approval of this budget.
Any questions?
Would you explain a little bit for people listening, what you mean by 18% fund balance? What is that for?
It's almost like, it's almost like your savings account. How many funds can be taken from bills? And DESI, there's no law, there's no really guidance, or guidance says it has to be a discerned percentage. It's whatever the board feels comfortable with, and, you know, looking at the economic outlook of where we're going, and how much money we need to have in our savings account. There are some, DESI does say that if your fund balance received goes down to 3% or 5%, then you're financially stressed. And as far as I know, our school has never been there. And so you are, I know the board refers to be around 20%, is what we refer, and so that's what we're hoping that we can get to by the end of this year. You want to have a decent sized fund balance, like I said, so if you needed to do, or if there's something, there's been times when the state has not given us some payments. So when we do not receive a payment from the state, we've got to take it, know that we have enough fund balance to cover our payroll. And so that's, that's what that is. You don't want the fund balance to be exorbitantly high, because you're no bank, you know, and it's, who'd say that if you have to go over the house and not the students, you have to live in the hospital? Yeah, so help that, help that spread.
Motion to approve. Take a motion to approve. I'll second it. All in favor? Motion dismissed.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is setting 2024-2025 school year renewal prices.
So this is a formality, it's required by law. The total weighted average price set by the USDA is $3.85. We're required to make progress to close the gap between what we charge and that number. So according to law, the maximum required price increase shall not exceed 10 cents, and we are required to hit that 10 cents, because we're actually, 37 cents is where we're at, but because we are, because we hit that, the maximum we can have to do is 10 cents. So my recommendation, based on USDA requirements, is to raise the price as presented.
Motion to approve. Motion dismissed. Thank you. I'll second it. All in favor? Yeah, I'm saying approve. Approve 2020 or 2025 curriculum, construction, and assessment plan.
Does anybody have any questions? I think Craig is on, he could answer any question that you might have.
Is there any changes in what's being done?
Are there any changes to apply for pre-K?
There's no substantial, there are no substantial changes to it.
And it'll be nice if there's like no major changes for once. There's always changes in assessment, with how many tests that the government, DESI requires. So that's probably a good thing, that we've not made any major changes this year.
One of the things that we are, can you hear me? Sorry.
I can't.
Can you hear me? Okay. So one of the changes we have made. So for the last two years, we've been giving evaluate every month. With all of the new additions that DESI gave this past year, we change, and we ask the evaluate to change. And so they listen to several of us here in Missouri, and so instead of having to...
So you're saying instead of having to have...
It used to be a monthly, it has to be a monthly assessment, and we're going to be able to only give it three times a year. So bring some instructional practice and time back, instead of so much testing time. So it's a good, very good thing.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? You going to say approve? I am D, 3024-2025 special learning plan.
Yeah, is there anything that you want to change, you want to bring out to us? Or maybe, I don't think it did work. I could help there.
entertain a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it. Thank you, all in favor? All right. Approve the 2024-2025 employee handbook. Any amendments, changes to the employee handbook?
There were, there were changes, but I don't think that they, they were not major changes. I appreciate it.
Yes, me too.
And actually, Kent and Philip did all that for, for us, so I, it was not me, it was them.
Thank you for that.
I love reading that stuff.
Yeah. Yes.
Motion to approve. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor? You going to say approve? Approve 2024-2025 student handbooks. Any major changes?
Anything that anybody wants to bring out to us?
At the pre-K 6 level, we added some basic guidelines for how students, parents, and faculty and staff should relate to one another. Things have gotten a little tougher in the last few years on how people treat one another, and so some have just cleared expectations there. Still directing people toward board policy, but just making clear, here are some very simple ways that we need to act together. We also, at the K4 level, added some information about making sure your child's potty trained. If you look, the average age of potty training used to be three, now it's five, and so we're having some kindergartners show up who should be potty trained, and there's no reason for them not to be. And so giving some guidelines about and expectations about that needs to happen. We had kindergarten preview and screenings not too long ago, and we made it clear to those families, hey, you've got a few months now, let's make sure we're potty trained before we come, so added some information there. Basically, those are the two biggest things, additions that we made. Other things were just maybe making sure that all of the pre-K through sixth grade handbooks had the same types of information in them, so we were consistent.
On the high school, we're not allowing lower classmen to attend well.
Is that what it says?
That's nine and 10 graders are not to attend. I thought that was interesting.
I wondered about that.
Yeah. From the same rules apply, which are the, I mean, I understand that there's a certain plan which is to attend, and then addition to these rules, from no ninth graders or 10th graders being attended.
I wonder, does that mean that's a date?
I thought that was...
I do not know that answer. I would assume part of that is because of space allow.
What does that mean?
I didn't, I was saying...
That probably be interesting, although, and there was a, I don't want to call, I'm going to call it a cha, I saw it as a challenge. Did, did. If, if two upperclassmen were going, they were giving their tickets to underclassmen as their dates, even though these two are going as a date and not this. And so I don't know if that, I know that was happening.
Right, but if you're just me and then my one ticket, um, how you can put parameters on that one ticket? I thought that was interesting.
I do not know. Um, but we can, if you would approve it, we can bring it back and revisit it. And anything, if any of this can be amended at any time.
Well, I just thought it was interesting.
Would it be some clarification on that?
Yes. I can't, you can't give that to you now, but you can do this. Yes, we can get you clarification then, absolutely.
But if they're expecting that they're junior, uh, invited to the sensor, oh, oh, wait, you can't come in there? I would, uh, what, what kids are ready for?
I think it's hard to, please, in a sense. We can get you clarification.
It might, it might be that ten ninth and tenth graders can't go, can't purchase tickets, but they can go as a date. Is that, uh, should be a chance?
Would you clarify that?
We'll get, we'll get you clarification.
I haven't had.
I think that was my minor thing in the past, that ninth and tenth graders have to be invited to go. So that...
Maybe, no, they, they never had that, that was the...
Yeah, that's a new sensation. Much just of practice.
I mean, I'm not close to that.
Yeah. We'll get you clarification on that.
I think I would add, like, out of a person that would say they could be invited.
Like not on their own.
Right, if, if that's the intent of, I would hate for the juniors to have a tenth grade, whatever, boyfriend, girlfriend. They invite them and they show them that they can't do anything, they don't think about it.
I would not think that would be good.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I think they're trying to get around what, what's hap, what's, and I, I agree that it should be more of a, a bit for the juniors and seniors and not what just happened in practice, in my opinion. I, I've, I mean, yeah, that's my, so seeing them like, I kind of like their stance. But I get that there would be the challenges when you're actually bringing your personal date is that age, but from a, um, and it's a, it, it's just, it's just...
I have a question about why does that matter? So like, why does that matter so much? If people plan, plan for X number of tickets that were sold, why do they, why does it matter? Because can't kids from other schools come?
The high school principals?
Yeah, they come in the office and check, you know, they, there's something, other than the office, they...
Are we going to believe that age?
We will. I, I'm, this went through the high school principals, so I'm sure they had a reason for it.
But I mean, you know, I mean, just when I'm reading on my...
Yeah, we can get that to you. Because there's, like, there are these limits and what we're trying to control. I mean, there's to be some work.
So I need a motion to approve as presented with, uh, understanding we'll get some clarification for possible future amendments.
Yep, absolutely.
I will make that motion.
Yes, I can.
I have a motion and second, all in favor? And you guys say approve? Moving on to change orders. They're pretty easy this month, if you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Could you explain them, please?
Okay, sure. So, uh, change order for our storm shelter cafeteria and kitchen. Uh, if you go to page two, you'll see that there's a ten foot six length of guard railing due to existing conditions. So once the final retaining wall was in place and elevations were taken, uh, that required an extension of the guard rail to ten feet, six inches, which is an add to the con, which is an add to the contract of one thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars. But that is moved from the contingency, so there's no increase at all to this project. As you look at the numbers, it still shows sixty-seven thousand two hundred and seven dollars in the contingency for the GMA or CMAR. And then there's sixteen thousand forty-two left in there for, you know, is our school contingency. As we're wrapping this project up, this should, those numbers will be one of those, like, when we get that money rolled, it's not really rolled back to us, it's our money. But it'll come back in for other projects as well. So that's the tiger paw finishing it up. And that's simply because the final conditions require a, a change or an extension of that.
What do you mean by that?
So you're moving dirt the whole time. So as, as, as you take dirt down and you add rock back and you build up the retaining wall height, once it's completed, the actual, the physical height of it isn't, isn't measurable until you're completed. Once you've measured it, then you realize that now you have to put a retaining or a guard rail up to keep kids from falling off of it into the, the area, then you have to come back and do it.
You don't know how tall it is and make it look so big?
Well, so say, say it's thirty, say it's twenty-nine inches, okay? So at twenty-nine inches, then now you actually take back and you cut further back into the wall and you cut further back. So the, the dirt now is thirty-two inches, instead of thirty or twenty-nine inches, now we're required to put in a handrail or a guardrail. But you, you're digging a hole, you're filling it in, you're adding concrete, you're cutting back and you're moving some of the tailings over here, over to here. So by the time you're done, e- even a difference of a couple inches requires the extension of a guardrail.
Okay. I wasn't trying to be argumental.
No, you're not at all.
Because I'm like, I think everybody was interested in this, I didn't talk about it.
But this is the dirt, this is the dirt in the retaining wall, and once you just keep moving it around, yeah. There is, slope is evolving. Yes, oh, there you, there you go.
But the big point, the big thing is that we're still saving, it looks like three hundred thirty-five thousand off the original price.
Uh, on this one, on this one, we're about, about a hundred thousand, but yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but by the time, yeah. Uh, and then when we get to the, um, storm shelter multipurpose, if you look at that one, add signage and power. And this is again, the, this was always part of it. Um, when you build a building, you build a building and the signage company comes in later. And they're the ones that have to measure and tell us where we're putting the, the power and how much power we need to put in. And so they've come in and they've measured and they know where we need to put it, they know how much power. So this is an add of two thou, uh, and removing from contingency to, uh, the actual contract amount is two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. That still, uh, leaves in the Branco CMR contingency, not almost ninety thousand. And then the remaining owner, owner contingency is fifty-six. This project's still moving on, um, but we are, we are getting close and it's, it's looking good on the inside. Hopefully, we start putting turf down, uh, next week. So, and then the third one, which is the, those are high school activities building. Uh, sorry, I said that wrong. This is the storm shelter, this is the activities building. Turf is going in the activities building. Uh, provide all materials and equipment necessary to, and it's a credit for drainage pipe. So this is thirty-seven hundred dollars, three thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars going back into the contingency. Uh, that goes back into the owner contingency. And then so here, as you can see, there's ninety, almost ninety-three thousand left in the CMR contingency and nearly fifty-nine thousand left in the owner contingency.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Betty. Motion to approve the change orders. I make a motion to approve the change orders. I'll second. All in favor? You guys say approve? Tiger paw tuition proposal.
Any meeting? So, um, we are proposing tonight to have inquiries in our tuition-based preschool and our after-raise. Um, so these are just two programs of the five quarters we have at, I remember they have this center. But to understand what that means, so our preschool classrooms, um, they're regular education. We are going to add two additional classrooms for the next school year. Um, so that will bring us to nine total classrooms serving under the age students in those rooms. The cost, so we have classroom teachers, parent professionals in each of those classrooms. Um, it is like a typical school day, five days a week. And we still have students on the waiting list since we're adding those classrooms. We're able to pull about four of those students off, which is really wonderful. We've been screening them all of June to offer those spots to families so far. Um, the next one for me. So the funding for those classrooms, we have a couple of different funding sources. We, as a district, are allotted a specific number of APA preschool spots, so average daily attendance, like April Wilson was mentioning earlier, based on our K twelve free reduced lunch eligibility. So students that are preschool age and have quality free reduced lunch, we are able to offer them free preschool. And based on that, we get funding on the state on that, which is the average daily attendance. Our classroom type of those students that are being that type of funding source, then also parent paid tuition as well. Our parent paid tuition currently, we go by a daily rate because we only charge the days that we're in session. Unlike some other private schools where they should charge a weekly rate, even if they're not there that day. Um, it's a daily rate, but it's, it's twenty-five dollars per day currently, which is under twenty-five forty currently. Um, and the proposal is to increase that rate. So also, we, there's a grant currently, a preschool startup grant that is being provided at the state to encourage facilities to create new preschool classrooms because the demand for early childhood education is so great that we are going to tap into, like more. And that provides fifty thousand dollars per classroom to set up that room. And it'd be applied towards, um, salaries, equipment, that type of thing. And so because our two classrooms would need that eligibility, we're going to get fifty thousand for each of those classrooms through that grant as well. The next program that we have that is parent tuition is our childcare program. Our childcare program is for district employees only. Um, we serve students six weeks, um, all the way to two years old, right, adult for that three-year-old classroom. So, um, you see a couple of our little guys right there. But we have different prices, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But that program runs every day that a teacher is required to be there. So it is beyond the school year, but if any teacher were there, we provide care for that. The hours per, on the school, typical school day is six-thirty in the morning to six P M to cover that time for our staff. If they have additional meetings or things to get to work. Um, we currently have to be the teachers and two assistant teachers in that program itself. And so that funding is totally in our pay. It is tuition-based. And currently, our infant toddlers, so those are one, infants all the way up until two years old, is thirty-seven dollars per day, hundred eighty-five a week. And then our two-year-olds are thirty-one dollars per day, hundred fifty-five per week. And so our proposed changes, basically, at this point, I'm proposing that we add two dollars per day for each of those programs. Um, but I've also provided a best scheduled increase so that he can account for some of the costs that we've incurred. The last time the board approved our increased schedule was two thousand nineteen. And so a lot of that happens since then, where you have really increased costs of everything. And so we really need to look at how do we cover the cost of providing this service to the, to the community and the, the parents and the children that want it and need it. Um, and so the proposal is just to increase two dollars per day for each of the programs. And then as we continue on through the years, having a scheduled increase so that we're not trying to hedge up quite as much as we are kind of now. Um, do you have any question about this specific? Okay, so your next one then. I have some tuition to pay for, so just for districts, um, so if we look at Nix, that and Republic, what their programs are. They don't necessarily provide the same type of program. For instance, Nix's preschool is only a half-day and four days a week. Um, so it's quite different than what we have. But then they have equal pay, which is like a day-to-day option for our parents. Uh, Republic is closer to what we currently provide, but again, everyone is charging more than we are. But then if you look at those are specifically the more the private ones, we are pretty far off, um, from what that is. Our, my philosophy is we don't want to cut our local businesses out of business because we're so cheap comparatively. But also we need to cover the cost of what it, what it costs to provide the service to our community. Um, to ask me, of course, I think we provide some of that preschool and early education around, beyond those, or like in the area completely. I think our staff and are so knowledgeable and wonderful. Um, and I think if you take the whole of our parents, they're very pleased with what we provide as well. And so we just need to get a little more competitive with that and also being conscious of the increased cost of personnel and everything. So that's why we're proposing this increase this, this long time.
Hey, Dr. Dawson, thanks so much for your presentation tonight. Um, I think that also adding the extra classes are, is amazing, especially that it looks like it's pretty much offset by the, the tuition and the other pieces. So it looks like it's basically, you know, no cost to us to add that benefit. Um, I had written out a question, how many, uh, how do you implement our, um, the waitlist, so you have to answer that. Uh, I guess, and, and also looks like, like you said, it's pretty much the lowest cost provider here, so...
I would like to make a comment. So we are adding a four or five-year-old preschool classroom and a three-year-old preschool classroom. By adding the six or five-year-old preschool classroom, we're getting almost everybody off that specific waitlist. And what that will look like is a little bit over twenty-five percent of our kindergarten class total will be going to type of class. So we have guaranteed, really have quality, really talented education for them, which is really exciting. And hopefully impacting that success will make into that elementary school setting.
So, so one question for you. With, with the addition of those kids, I know it's a great, so is there any issue that you foresee? Uh, oh yeah, that's kind of a...
Well, so we have been utilizing our main cafeteria and storm shelter this summer and the indoor. And I, I'm almost just thinking about how much this improved the dysfunction of our building and all the pieces. Um, whenever that was added, it took away some of our playgrounds. Um, it took, eliminated our two-year-old playground, so it had a little bit specific for littler people. Um, and then, so we have our current playground and then we have fields that we available, can spread in. Just because of the size, the increase of two, of number of students will put pressure on us to have students have the opportunity to really, um, utilize that space. At this age, it's really important for them to be developing motorically and physically. And so we really, our teachers are out of our recess, we consider that to start shop signing a lot of times. Um, and our, one of our other programs is early childhood special education. Last year alone, we have eighty-five students that had either identified motor disabilities or delays. And so having an accessible playground, which our playground is not, we have the pieces of equipment that they can get to. But that's probably the most, the biggest impacted area for us with the increase of, of our rosters, our student population currently. But overall, we're really excited to be able to have these kids, um, because I feel like we're making a bigger impact, which is pretty helpful.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm getting too quick with Zing, you have the microphone, so I'll yell. Um, and, uh, how long is okay, I'm wondering with that. Uh, what, what is your, even with the addition of being able to cut down the waiting list, what, any idea what that waiting list is now?
It grows as the years go on. We have some people in our community, even the second they have a baby, they get on the waiting list because they want a spot. So we, we build our classrooms by kindergarten cohort. So these classes are the kids who will go to kindergarten, right? And we build our waiting list that way too. So this group of children, this is one waiting list. The next cohort is another waiting list. So the whole cohort of students that will be going to kindergarten in twenty-five, twenty-six, that's our preschool right now. Um, we are almost getting to the very end of that. And so we are offering spots almost to everyone. The next one, which is our three-and-quarter olds, we have ninety preschool spots that we're going to have for them. We still probably currently have about seventy kids on that waitlist, and that will grow this school year. And so that'll probably get to two hundred and fifty by the time. But we will be able to offer, um, eighty more spots for that, for them, uh, next school year. And so then as to have more waiting lists down here, but they're not really in play yet because we, they're not looking up to be offered a slot by...
As you grow, do you have the capacity, is that building currently, um, funding provided? But space-wise, do you have the capacity to grow right now for the future if it, if there are...
We have the capacity to grow, um, probably a few more classrooms, yes. But I also think as we look at the future, we will look at different types of service delivery. Um, I would really like to add half-day preschool for just regular education students because some three-year-olds don't need to go all day long, you know? And so they can go over in session or after any session. And so for that one classroom, that one teacher, about those resources, you could serve potentially forty students instead of twenty students. And so thinking about how we offer those, I have some parents that would love them to be in the tiger paw, but they don't want them to have time. And so looking at the community and what their needs are too, we do have the capacity to grow. And so looking at the community and what their needs are too, we do have the capacity to grow more. But I think we need to think about how we serve as our students differently as well.
Very good, thank you.
Any more questions?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. I'll second it.
All in favor? unanimous approve? Last on the agenda is a journey.
I'll second.
All in favor? unanimous approve this journey.